To make it, I heard it kind of turned into a shit show on Friday night a little bit.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Dibdaw?
Here.
Commissioner Cronin?
Here.
Commissioner Wire?
Here.
Commissioner Bersh?
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsay?
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You have consent calendars. Anything anyone wants to discuss on the consent calendar? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under acknowledgements, we want to recognize Sarah Cronin for serving on the Madison City Commission. And at this point in time, Sarah, would you join me over here? With great appreciation to Sarah Cronin, Commissioner of the City of Madison, for the years of service from 2024 to 2025.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Under unfinished business, second reading of ordinance number 1680, Regulation of Wheeled Electronically Propelled Devices. Jameson, do you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance adds new regulation in for, as the name implies, wheeled electronically propelled devices. So these can be scooters, one wheelers, other devices that folks can ride around town. So this is new regulation and there's no changes from the last reading, the first reading. What this does is allows our police officers to regulate these devices in line with bicycles. We encourage people on them to treat them like a bicycle. So there's language in there that states what you should be doing based on what speed you're going, as well as how, based on how old the user is. If you're under 18 years of age, we want people to be wearing a helmet. I think that summarizes it. Justin, anything to add?
The only other thing would be eye protection as well.
Yep, eye protection for anybody going over 20 miles an hour if I'm in Burbank.
Correct, sir. Very good.
Any, any eye protection or what qualifies?
They could wear any eye protection. They can wear tinted sunglasses during the day. They just can't wear sunglasses at night.
And I've had positive comments.
Very good.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the second read in, reading of ordinance 1680, Regulation of Wheeled Electronically Propelled Devices.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under new business, public hearing upon the application for a temporary retail on and off sale malt beverage license to the Madison Baseball Association for the Amateur Baseball District Tournament. Do we have someone who wants to speak to that?
Eric Hortness with the Madison Baseball Association. So the amateur team in town, the Broncos, are hosting their district tournament this year. It comes around once every eight or nine years. They rotate it between all of the...
You're good.
You're good.
Between all of the teams in the league. And this is our turn to host it. And our plan is to have a little beer tent set up, which isn't uncommon for the other teams when they host it. They typically have a little beer area also. We will card everybody. Anybody that purchases beers at the beer tent will get a wristband. Just in case there is any issues. And we can go around and see who's drinking the beer and who's not. But doesn't matter their age. If they're buying beer, they'll, they'll get a wristband put on them as well. So the dates of the tournament starts this Friday. So it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So seven dates over the course of nine days.
Okay, very good. Anyone else want to speak at the public hearing? Okay, if not, thank you, Eric. And we'll move on to number 10. Consider approval of the temporary retail on off sale malt beverage license for the Madison Baseball Association Amateur Baseball District Tournament.
I make a motion to approve the application for a temporary malt beverage license.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brooke Rolag, Madison Area Development Corporation, with a new organizational name and branding. Very good. It's not.
You gotta hold it.
There you go, it's on.
Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you, guys. It's good to see you all again. It's been a minute since I've been here. I felt like I was up every agenda for about a year. And now I took a little break and now I'm back. So excited to have announced at our annual meeting, we are officially rebranding away from the Lake Area Improvement Corporation into Madison Area Development Corporation. This was a spinoff of, of the city strategic planning, just wanting to better define the different partnerships and us viewed as a, as a partner as opposed to a department within the city. Our logo is matched, very, very similar to the City of Madison. And so that's how, one of the pieces that started also the desperate need for an updated new website. We've been working with what we have for quite some time, but we're not too super tech savvy. And so we're needing to navigate to something newer and more updated. So combining those two, we went on a mission to look at our logo. And while looking and designing that logo, the more we emphasized Lake Area, it became very apparent, Lake Area Technical College's marketing budget is significantly larger than ours. And, and we were often being mistaken from Lake Area. So I use the example, when I'm in a community outside of, you know, Lake County or our little region, I can't really utilize the words, hi, I'm Brooke from Lake Area, and I'm easily confused with a technical college. And so there was, there's a number of steps. I think, I think my specific words at the beginning of the year is, I'm not doing a full rebrand. But I think a new logo is a great idea, Savannah. And one thing kind of led to the next. And it really was important to have a geographical indicator, utilizing the City of Madison and the entire area. But I do want to emphasize our mission, our vision, and the work that we do is still the same. It's just taking that necessary steps. It was a great name for 50 years. We should continue to progress forward. Another example that I give is county versus city identification just geographically is, 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 who knows where Woodbury County is? Well, where's Sioux City?
Sioux City.
So, so you use the word Sioux City, it's an easy, well, and maybe you knew, Mayor. But for us, you know, for, for, for most people, counties aren't as easily defined geographically. So as we talk to, you know, people outside of the community, we, you know, welcome them to our community. It's really important to have that geographic indicator. So all these brilliant marketing people that volunteered their time with us told me this is the right thing to do. So we followed the experts' leads. So really want to thank the city's leadership and the strategic planning. That was one of the pillars that led us to this full rebrand. So excited to have initially officially launched a Madison Area Development Corporation. From here, we'll look to rebrand any logos. And then we'll, the second half of this year is really to focus on that website and pushing that out, making it more digital friendly as well. That's one update. And if you have time, I can give you a brief update on the early learning center as well as industrial park.
Go for it. Yes, please.
The early learning center projects, just maybe a week behind, but in, in all reality, really on time. We're scheduled for completion at the end of this year with the anticipated opening date of March of 2026. So at this point, it's autopilot, knock on wood. Things are going very well. We spent a lot of time prior to dig date and design development in hopes that we didn't have a lot of hiccups come up. So we're really happy with how the project's gone thus far. Any questions? I know it's an exciting project to see coming to fruition.
It is, yes. Any questions or comments? Well, thank you for the update.
Yeah, and then the other one is the industrial park expansion. So we did finally, we finalized that project with the seed and erosion. So that project is now 100% complete. Do want to thank Amy and her team. We've worked closely with them through the EDA and all the grant reimbursements. The bulk of that project was done last year. Winter hit and we did have to just button it up this spring. But now it's just the final paperwork. We hope to, to put a bow on it. So we're excited to have the additional 50 plus acres of fully serviceable industrial park land that's available for new and expanding businesses. So lots of work from an infrastructure standpoint, lots of work from a finance standpoint. So again, greatly appreciate everyone's willingness to jump in. And it's a, it's a great project. Now I'm done, Roy.
Very good, very good. And then Eric, I see you've got a new symbol in that for the Madison Chamber that is similar to the Madison Area Development Corporation. They both look very, very nice.
I had a quick question for you, Brooke.
Yes, of course.
So is the proper short form MADC or M A D C?
I was going with MADC, but there's a lot that just keeps saying it's a MADC. And I was like, oh, no, no. We'll see whatever naturally kind of evolves, but MADC is kind of the intent.
Now you'll just have to distinguish between South Dakota and Wisconsin or any of the other states, because every state has a Madison. So, no, very good. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just take a moment to expand on the strategic plan because I really want to thank the MADC. It's gonna take a very long time to adjust my thinking. There's the MADC and the Madison Area Chamber for their work with the entire plan. And I think this is one easy to see example of something that's come out of that. Ironically, it's a city strategic plan and the strategy for this area simply said that the city, and I think it noted the Chamber, will undergo a branding initiative to, to look at our assets, look at our logos and to, you know, examine those. And ironically, the city, who's really the started with, we kept our logo. We've kind of reestablished that. We've aligned a lot of our materials. And so it cleans up quite nicely and a lot of our materials are looking better. But we kept the same logo. And then the Chamber is the next step away. They were included in the plan and they have a new logo, as you can see on the screen here now. And that's turned out very nicely. And then LAIC, now the MADC wasn't even listed on that, but, but they got pulled into it. And as Brooke said right away, she says, I'm not doing a rebrand. I'm not doing a new name or anything, but one thing led to another. And they're the ones that had the biggest change that came from, from all of this in the strategic plan. So I do want to thank them not just for this item. I think this helps to align all of the entities so that they're, they have, they have a professional, beautiful look with their logos. But also we, we can identify each other by name and not be confused by logos. If they're, if some people in town think that they are a city department or similar because their logos were so close to ours before. So I want to thank them on this effort as well as the whole strategic plan. They're close partners and they are aligned with us in many of our strategies and looking forward to seeing what we can accomplish next.
No, very good.
Thank you all for your time.
Very good, thank you. Okay, number 12. Award bid number 982, Southeast Substation 69 KV to 115 KV, conversion to IES Commercial Incorporated. Jameson or Mike, either one of you want to tackle that?
I'll give the quick overview on this. So this is for the conversion of our Southeast Sub as the name states, from 69 to 115 KV. We did receive five bids on this, but unfortunately two were non-responsive. They weren't filled out as we needed to. And so the three remaining bids ranged from a high bid of $1,245,000 to the low bid in the amount of $1,015,997.74. And that was from IES Commercial. All of these were underneath the engineer's estimate of 1.33 million. So that's certainly nice to see. And DGR reviewed them and recommends award to the low bidder, IES Commercial. Mike, anything to add?
You're on.
I think you got it.
Nope, now you're on.
Yeah, I think you got it. Yep, that summed it up pretty well.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
What was the timeframe or the construction? What did we have set for a date?
So energization on the sub is next July 2026. So everything else will be completed by then.
Start early summer?
Early spring.
Spring, or spring?
We're trying to coordinate the outage, so we're not overloading the rest of our substations to where we don't get into heavy air conditioning season or anything like that.
You don't want it on today.
That would have been a tough one to do.
It would.
Again, it's nice to see at least four, five bids, three qualifying bids and coming in under engineering estimate begin.
I did receive, there was more interest, I think, for the, for the bid, but there was time constraints on the, from them submitting their bids on time.
That was my next thought, to be able to get that many bids on this quick of a project. In short lead time.
And DGR did suggest that there's usually about three to four on a job off this size.
Other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to award bid number 982, Southeast Substation 69 to 115 KV, conversion to IES Commercial, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 13. Consider approval of change order number three, Madison Creek Walls Improvement Site Two, Kestaloot Excavation and Dirt Work Services. Jameson or Ryan, who wants to take this one? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this change order is a result of a $10,827 increase for some additional structural concrete fill and some additional wall ties and footing ties. After de-watering the channel and exposing the toe of the existing stone wall, it was determined that that retaining wall that was there and planned would need to be widened from three feet to four feet in order to accommodate the configuration of that existing wall. The wall, it's not consistent. It doesn't lean consistently. So it comes in and out and some of those areas are steeper than others and shallower than others. And then the alignment of the wall is also kind of irregular. And so in order to accommodate those irregularities and to carry the loads properly, it required that footing to be increased from three feet to four feet. Again, the total amount is $10,872. As you know, the city's contribution to this project is 15%. So that would be $1,630.80 is what the city would be responsible for. FEMA and the state of South Dakota have been brought up to speed on this and, and are supportive.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve change order, yeah, change order number three, Madison Park Creek Wall Improvement Site Two to Kestaloot Excavation and Dirt Services. And do you need the amount or how do we? That's good. All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same signs. Motion carries. Number 14. Discuss and possible action related to the maintenance or demolition of the Northwest Water Tower at 504 Northwest Fourth Street. Jameson, you want to begin this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the city has three water tower assets, but only two are still in use. And so today we're here to talk about the third, which is Northwest Fourth Street. And this would be the Northwest Water Tower we have in town. And it's the oldest asset that we have. So this was taken out of service in 2023, once the new tower in the industrial park was complete. And even though it is no longer in use, we still have to make sure that we maintain it for, for safety reasons and otherwise as well. So staff wanted to get direction on how you'd want to handle this asset with the two alternatives being we either need to be maintaining it or we need to be demolishing it. Maintenance would be under, and I'm going to kind of summarize what was in the memo here. If you're wanting to follow along, you sure can. Maintenance, we got a quote from Utility Service Group. They offer maintenance plans on tower assets like this. And so they had quoted us for, for the first four years would be spread out, but $591,612. And so that, that, that dollar amount would be going towards recoding, repainting it. Right now, the paint is starting to flake off and it does have a high content of lead. So that needs to be addressed. And then there are a few repairs that need to be made to the structure as well. One in particular to the, to the ladder on it. So that's the work that would be done for that $591,000, spread out over four years. And then they have maintenance plans available that have a smaller annual fee. So for $14,618, starting out in year five, and then escalating from there, they would be able to maintain that asset, do periodic inspections and work on it. And then someday, generally this is how they, they have this work. Someday, 20 years down the road, if you have to have a repaint or a coat, that annual number has been including the cost for that work that'll be coming in. So that is a nice plan to use for, for tower assets because it spreads that out and it makes it a lot easier to budget so that we don't have to plan for $600,000 all in one lump sum. Alternatively, demolishing is a lot lower cost. We had gotten a couple quotes and the low quote from that is $138,000. And so that removes the tank and the structure, but not the foundations of the cement on the ground. There might be other miscellaneous work, but that, that for the most part takes the, takes the tank out of, out of service entirely. And both of those, whether it's maintaining or demolishing, we should note that these are estimates at this point. And because of dollar amounts that we're dealing with, would need to be competitively bid. And at that time, we would have exact cost for what that would be. We'll note that on top of the tank, we have lease agreements with AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless. So they have equipment up there. Those are long-term contracts. AT&amp;T expiring in 2027, Verizon not until 2042. And so the value of the remaining payment on those contracts is just under $500,000. We are able to terminate those and the longer, the longer termination would be AT&amp;T, we have to give them a one-year written notice. So if we do want to work towards demolition, we'd want to be able to provide that notice sooner rather than later. I think that summarizes the options. We'll note that if it's demolished, as far as what you want to do with the property, you could, you could remove the foundations and try to sell it to anybody that would have some use for it. You could also potentially keep the foundations and sell it to an AT&amp;T or Verizon if they want to put their own tower on it. So those are kind, the AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless, they're kind of the, the, the wild card. I guess the unknown factor at this point. Because we don't know if they would want to, to build their own tower. We don't know if they would prefer to relocate elsewhere in town. If they want to relocate elsewhere in town, we don't know what, where their location would be. And I say that, that's a factor because if they want to locate on different city asset and we're minimal to that, then we would be able to continue receiving revenue from that lease agreement. So that $595,000 potentially could be some other amount on a new tower or some other city asset. If they relocate not in a city asset, then that would, would be dollars that we wouldn't be receiving in the future as well. I think it is clear that the, the cost of maintenance is a lot higher than the cost of demolition. But we know that this, this tower has historical and local culture to it and that a lot of people in town are very fond of it as well. So we realize that there's more to this than just dollar amounts as well. And that's why we wanted to bring it to you for discussion and direction. That's probably enough for me. I'll pause there and stand by for any questions. Mike's here as well.
And I'd like to speak on this a little bit too. In 2014, 2015, when Fred was here, we had the tower inspected and inside and out. And it was determined that the tower itself was solid and in good condition, would probably last another 30, 40 years. The, when we started the RD project, we looked at putting the, the replacement tower on that same site because the plumbing and all was there. It was going to cost a million dollars to relocate all the electronics from everybody off the tower onto a temporary. And then if the new one was built there, to put it back on there. And so the other thing in that is we did look at a maintenance agreement at that time and decided against it. And we did repaint the tower at that time for a cost of $30,000. So that gives you a timeframe of when the tower was, was repainted. And there is a tremendous amount of electronics that go to that facility. And, and there's a building right there. I'm not sure, Ryan, is that our building or is that, is that our building?
There's, there's three buildings there, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and then we also have a...
Yeah, so, so you know, there would be considerable expense, you know, to move it. Now, it was discussed when we were talking on the RD project that we could remove the tank and leave the framework there and continue with the agreements and that that we currently have. So Ryan, correct me if I said something that doesn't sound correct. But you know, I guess from my standpoint, if we wanted to do something, we could either leave it as is and maintain it ourselves with, with or without a maintenance agreement. Or we could remove the tank and still have a solid foundation in that for those electronics in that to remain.
So I guess I can't speak towards past estimates. And I'll defer to Mike. Mike's dug into this a lot better than I have. So any cost to move the electrical equipment for AT&amp;T and Verizon wouldn't be borne by the city. Is that correct, Mike?
As far as I know, yes, that is correct.
So we, we checked with legal to see, to make sure that we can have these terminations. And Verizon, it only requires three months. AT&amp;T, it is a full year. But that, that's something that I think we can work within and build into our schedule because we're not planning on doing any demolition this year if we wanted to. So as far as, as cost to move electrical stuff, our staff are able to move whatever we have on the tower for, for the meter reading or elsewhere. And then Verizon, AT&amp;T would be responsible for their costs. So it's possible that I'm missing something, but I don't think there's any cost for us to be moving.
As far as electronic equipment on the tower itself, it is just our old radios that are not in use anymore. And then our gateways for our AMI system. We have two other gateways in town and this could possibly be relocated to either the MMU building or the New Green Sub, which has to have a tower built up there as well, which is pretty close to in the timeframe to where we would have to move that anyway. So there's propagation. We're, we're gonna have OATI do propagation studies right now just to make sure that that location would be good in case we would either demolish or whatever you guys would decide to do.
How big is that lot? I don't even know. Is there room for a temporary or permanent, temporarily permanent tower? You know, if we were to tear the tower?
At the same time?
Yeah, mono tower or something?
I don't know if there would be room. I, I don't foresee that there would be enough.
I, I don't think there would.
Yeah.
And the foundations, what's, what's under it? A water tower?
Uh, so underneath the tower, there, there is foundations for each leg. Um, there is a, um, an open basement there. There's actually two open basements there for the piping. Um, and then there's piping going out the street. And then the foundations for the shafts.
That's going to be a pretty substantial amount of concrete that needs to come out of the ground, then.
If you decided to go that route, if you decided to, that, the, the foundations would have to be removed.
What would be the, the thought on just taking the tank?
I, I don't, uh, for me, it, it doesn't matter either way. The tank itself, I do know that there are, um, antennas on top of the tank itself, uh, so I don't know if there would be enough room around just the, the, the superstructure, uh, for all of the antennas that are up there right now. Because I know they have them around the superstructure right now, and then they have them actually on top of the tank as well.
I guess my quick opinion is, uh, you know, I, I do value these contracts. I think, I, I think it'd be worthwhile to potentially table this, see if there's an appetite for the, for Verizon and AT&amp;T to, um, extend or make new agreements with new city infrastructure, uh, already in existence. Um, but also, I'd like to, uh, you know, put this more in the media and ask for community feedback on, you know, the historic value of the, of the actual structure, too.
It's been a staple for a long time. I know it's, uh, the nameplate on the tower itself states nineteen thirty-three, so it's been here since then. So it probably is pretty important. Uh, so I think that's probably a great idea.
I would agree with that as well. Um, I think after people get a chance to look at the costs involved and, and the options, I'd really like to know what people's feedback is and how they feel about, uh, getting rid of it if the historical factor of it is important to them.
Other questions or comments?
I think the only thing I'd like to see is that breakdown of the maintenance for those, for the next five years, to see if that would adjust based on just having the top of it taken off. I'm sure, you know, in the event that we'd have to put some sort of structure on the top or platform to host everything else, I mean, I'd, I'd just like to see the options that would allow us to salvage those relationships and save that revenue, because it's an asset that's providing funds that, um, we definitely want to keep that if possible. But if the cost is as high as you say it is to move it, that is definitely going to incentivize them to work with us to keep it there.
You know, if, uh, if it's in need of painting again, I, I guess I'd like to see what the cost of repainting it would be, and what kind of maintenance and that would need to be on the, the ladder, uh, and that, you know. Uh, I don't envision that we're going to having people climb it anymore.
So the, the cellular contractors, they do have people climb that, because they, they do update their equipment quite often. Just as I've been here long, I think it's been twice, they've, they've been up that tower and, and, uh, revamped their, their, uh, their antennas up there, their infrastructure up there.
Uh, I would agree. Uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to see some other options also. I'm not necessarily excited about going into a maintenance agreement that's going to cost us more than we're receiving. Uh, and like I said, you know, I remember visiting with Fred back when we, uh, did that before, and we shied away from a maintenance agreement, just got a bid for painting it. And my memory is, it was around thirty thousand dollars to have it painted.
Uh, last I spoke to, I think the, the issue we have with painting is, uh, reclaiming that lead paint. I don't think we can just paint right over that. I think that has to be.
They did last time.
They did.
Yeah, yeah. They just said that it was more dangerous to remove it than to, uh, than to seal it, and they felt that it was, it was solid. I do remember that. So.
And I can provide that inspection report that, uh, USG has also. If you guys would like to see that. It shows, uh, the breakdown of, of where, uh, what needs to be done on that tower, according to their, their inspections.
Was that inspection done for the use case that it would be still utilized for water delivery, or was it more just for maintaining just the structure and, okay?
Yeah, just maintaining the structure and paint and.
Other questions or thoughts? Okay. Uh, I guess I'm hearing, you know, table it and maybe look at, you know, more options, more thoughts?
Yeah, if I can paraphrase back to make sure the staff has clear understanding. You're looking for, for community feedback, which I think is a great idea. And so we, we would encourage anybody from the public who has thoughts on this, especially those who might live in the area, um, and have had this, this, uh, tower in their neighborhood for some time. Uh, we'd want to hear from, from anybody who has thoughts on that. And then we can also look at, too, uh, additional information on, um, what potential avenues are for working with AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless, and, um, additional cost estimates for removing the tank but not the e-structure. Is that accurate?
The cost of repairing and, and painting separate.
The, the structure, yeah.
From the maintenance agreement, yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so just the flat cost for, for the recoding and the repairs. Okay? Mike, you got all that?
I got it.
All right. Thank you guys for your direction.
All right.
I think we can probably take a motion to table till next meeting.
Make a motion to table the maintenance and demolition of the Northwest Water Tower.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Sig Five saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion scheduling of future municipal elections. Jamison, you want to talk about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this next item for discussion is how we want to handle municipal elections in the future. So at this last legislative session, HB eleven thirty was passed, and so that requires schools and municipalities to hold their elections either in June during the state primary election, or in November during the state's general election. Um, in the past, we've held our election generally in April, with swearing in a month after that. And so either way, we're going to be looking at a change. So in the memo in the packet, I outlined a few advantages, disadvantages for either option. And, um, one thing I'm still hoping to hear more information on is I'd like to hear from the school, if they've got any thoughts on what they would like to see happen, when they would like to be held. I think that would be a big factor. I think it's worked well to, um, to hold the elections with, with other local government entities in the past. Um, so that's something I have, I do not have more information on. At this point, looking for your guys' initial thoughts on where you'd want to move your election to.
I guess my thought is, is that, uh, you know, the comments that I've heard from, uh, superintendents when this went through was November really kind of hit them in the middle of their school year, and that they preferred the earlier timeframe. In fact, they preferred to stay where they were. So I'd be interested to see, uh, you know, if they're looking at June or November as well in that, so. I think November, as you had noted in that, elections can get pretty lengthy in, in, uh, in November. June, I think, you know, uh, during the primaries might be, you know, better suited for cities. And, and especially if we're bringing someone on when we're getting ready to start talking about budget.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I think June, especially if it works better for, for them with their timeframe, it makes more sense, especially with everything else that is, um, that goes on in November, and they get the attention to their election that they deserve.
Other thoughts?
I, I honestly don't have strong feelings either way, but I, I'd like to see it still aligned with the school.
Okay. Uh, the budget timeframe is a good point. Yeah, November is a more challenging time for our budget, so it would be, um, easier to have some, a new person coming in in July than it would be in December, probably from a budget standpoint, depending when we get that budget passed. But, and then aligning with the school. I, I think.
And aligning with the school here as well.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for your feedback.
And number sixteen, financial updates. Again, Amy Jamison?
We have the finance updates for June. The Finance Department has been extremely busy addressing several critical items related to audit compliance, reserve restructuring, and two thousand twenty-six budget preparation. We're actively working with the Department of Legislative Audit to realign general fund assignments and unassigned balances to ensure compliance with SDCL nine twenty-one thirty-one point two. We're working closely with department heads to develop the two thousand twenty-six budget at this time. Cash on hand is eleven point eight million total. Investments are at five point nine six million, checking four point nine million, money market at six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, other two hundred and seventy-one thousand, and restricted cash at six hundred and thirty thousand. Our revenue guidelines. By fund for June. By fund here to date.
Are some of these that are, uh, shown, uh, you know, in parentheses eligible for reimbursement that isn't showing yet?
Um, the biggest one would be our creek, um, um, creek walls. Our sales tax for May, or it should be?
Yeah, June's still not available, which is surprising. Today's the twenty-first, and typically they, they have had them, but I checked right before the meeting, and sales tax for June is still not available. Probably will be first thing tomorrow morning.
All right, questions or comments? Okay, our next regular commission meeting will be Monday, August fourth, five thirty PM. Uh, National Night Out will be Tuesday, August fifth, and Miracle Treat Day will be July thirty-first. And then our special meeting will be tomorrow, five thirty. Tomorrow, here in the commission room at five thirty. So pursuant to, uh, South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five dash two, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
To move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Sig Five saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we will move into the conference room.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Well, I kind of want to publicly, uh, thank Ryan, hey, for helping me out.
Very good.
Um, there were some issues with the construction in front of my house, and they were actually taking the EGM traffic down my alley. And I talked to the, the workers, and they told me that, yeah, it would be a problem. They called the city, and the police chief telling me that anybody can use that alley if they wanted to. We got a lot of kids in that alley, and they were just taking traffic down it. So I came down on Friday, ready to move the science myself. Ran to Ryan in the office, and I don't know who did it, if he did it on his own, by himself, but I want to thank you publicly, because that, and that's the kind of stuff that makes the community work. You know, I, I really am thankful. And they're ready to go in front of my house now, and I'm hoping it's just going to go as smooth as possible. But I just do, I, I really want to say, that could have been a big argument with a lot of people, and it didn't. It ended up just peaceful. So.
Thank you for sharing.
But thanks to all for everything.
And again, a phone call from, a phone call from a truck driver on the one-by-eight classic corner. Ryan went out and moved out a few feet, too.
He's more valuable than you think.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.